Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, well, I guess we better go with that roll call again first.
Mayor.
President.
First Ward.
Here.
Second Ward.
Here.
Third Ward.
Here.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
Our President, your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight it gives me a great deal of pleasure to issue a proclamation for a very old and dear friend of mine who has done so much for the city of Fulton, Nunzio Fashara. Nunzio was a friend of mine, as I say, for many, many years. He also played ball with us. He was our tenth man on the team. And many is the time when he bailed us out from having to forfeit a game because we didn't have enough players. He was always willing to fill in, just as he always willing to help anybody who needed help at any time. A man deserves our respect and devotion. Whereas Nunzio Fashara, real estate broker and appraiser for over forty years, has been coaching youth basketball for over forty-five years. And whereas Nunzio Fashara began his coaching career as an intermural coach back in the 1950s. In 1960, he began his career in the county CYO lead, coaching the Holy Family team in Fulton. And whereas Nunzio Fashara always listened to the young men he coached, generation after generation of kids always listened to him. Nothing complex, just solid, solid-the-earth advice. Nothing made him happier than one of his old players became a good citizen. And whereas Nunzio Fashara's always given, yet has never asked for anything in return, he taught his player more than just how to play basketball. He taught his players about life. And whereas Nunzio Fashara has served in the church council at Holy Family since its inception, he's an avid hunter and fisherman and enjoys woodworking and any type of construction. Now therefore, I, George C. Valet, Mayor, do hereby proclaim Sunday, September 20th, as Nunzio Fashara Day in Fulton, dated today's date, and signed by me. On the agenda, the first item, please. Yeah. the city of Fulton and one that the city will sadly miss. He was a man who was devoted to his job, who knew it better probably than anybody ever has in the history of this city, who never hesitated when he was called out, no matter what time of day or night, and unsteningly gave everything that required and more. The city is going to sorely miss him, and certainly I know I will, as Mayor. I've known Ray for many years, and I treasure the memory of him as a friend. Played ball with him, and I feel that it's a privilege to have this opportunity to say these words. I personally will miss him. I've never known Ray to say an unkind word or a harsh word about anybody at any time, and you can't say that about very many people. We say goodbye to you, Ray. I miss you a lot, but we won't forget you.
Whereas Raymond K. Capron Senior passed from this life on August 28, 1992, at University Hospital in Syracuse, New York. Whereas Raymond K. Capron Senior was a life resident of Fulton and foreman of the City of Fulton Water Department. And whereas he was a member of the Fulton Lodge, BPOE, the Fulton Post, VFW, and the VFW's Dad's Club. Whereas Raymond K. Capron Senior was an Army veteran of the Korean War. Whereas he is survived by his wife, Mary Evelyn, four daughters, Christine Bonnie, Maureen Capron, Bernice Rowe, and Elizabeth Capron, all of Fulton, a son, Raymond Junior of Hannibal, two brothers, Bernard of Fulton and Gary of Oswego, eight grandchildren, and several nieces and nephews. Whereas the Mayor, all members of this common council, all of his friends, all his fellow workers, neighbors, and acquaintances will miss this kind gentleman who both personally and professionally touched so many lives. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor and members of this common council share this great sense of loss with the family members of the late Raymond K. Capron Senior, and do with deepest regret take official notice of the loss of Ray Capron Senior. And be it further resolved that this resolution of respect will be spread upon the official records of this common council meeting of September 1, 1992, and a copy of it will be transmitted to the immediate family of the late Raymond K. Capron Senior.
I'll move it.
One second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
The motion is unanimously carried.
Could we take a moment of silence, of prayer on behalf of Ray?
Sure. Next item, please.
Resolved that the Mayor be authorized to sign a quit lane deed between the city of Fulton, New York and Douglas W. Morton and Rebecca Cammonite for their property located at 10 Whittaker Road.
Motion, please.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Okay, I'd like to add an amendment to the motion on the quit lane deed and add to it subject to the approval of the city attorney. That motion for the amendment, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Number three, please.
Resolved that the schedule of bills payable dated from July 17 through September 1, which were previously approved by the common council auditing committee, are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Four, please.
Resolved the city clerk's report for the month of July, an amount of $7,605.98 be received, approved, and placed on file.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Five, please.
There's a meeting the council held on August 18. The clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on September 1 at 7:30 PM in the council chambers relative to special use permit request submitted by Vincent Zai to convert a garage to a single-family dwelling for his property located at 203 Pine Street. The hearing is declared open.
Any comment? Is that a comment, Ross, or are you just talking to? No comment. Public hearing is closed.
Whereas public members of the council have had, been given an opportunity to express their written and oral opinions, be resolved a special use permit request submitted by Vincent Zai for his property located at 203 Pine Street is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Six, please.
There's a meeting of the common council held on August 18. The clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for public hearing to be held at this meeting September 1. In the council chambers and municipal building concerning proposed local law number one of 1992 entitled a local law enacting a retirement incentive program for the eligible employees of the city of Fulton. The hearing is declared open.
Any comment? Public hearing is closed.
Whereas the public members of the council have had given an opportunity to express their written and oral opinions on this matter, be it resolved that the proposed local law number one of 1992 entitled a local law enacting a retirement incentive program for the eligible employees of the city of Fulton is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Seven, please.
Resolved the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on September 15 at 7:30 PM in the council chambers relative to amendment to chapter 78 of the Fulton City Code.
I'll move it.
Second, please.
One second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Eight, please.
Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Valet of Peter Franco, 141 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York as Commissioner of Deeds is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Nine, please.
Resolved that the traffic department install a flashing light at the intersection of South 1st Street and Rochester Street with an amber caution for north-south traffic on South 1st Street and a red flashing for westbound traffic on Rochester Street.
Were we going to get some cost estimates before we decide?
They gave us cost estimates on that once, and it was due to effect of two incidences down there on the corner from constituents that live in the Tofat Towers, but they brought this back to the table again in concern of safety for the people that live in that building, seeing how they have to cross that road in order to get to their parking lot, put their vehicles in and out of. And I just don't think that it's a case of dollars and cents versus human life.
I know I had a similar circumstance over in the first ward at the corner of Philip and First where our light was taken down and was put back up after my constituents fought the people sitting here at the time and the state of New York to get a traffic light back over there also. You know, I think we have to look at safety first.
I'll move it. Second, please.
Second.
Question, what's the matter, Dick?
How's the flashing light going to be any more effective than the stop signs there now?
There is no traffic conveyance on South 1st Street whatsoever to slow traffic in the direction of people trying to cross South 1st Street from Tofat Towers to the parking lots. There is a stop sign period on Rochester Street.
Do you feel that the flashing caution light then is going to slow traffic enough for people to cross rather than a full light itself?
That is a result of the traffic study that was done. The only thing that was involved in the issue at all is the cost versus the effect. And like I said, I don't think it's a case of dollars and cents of what human life is about.
How would a stop light have been more effective?
Not their resolution.
I talked to Captain Allen yesterday about this since he did the study, and he said based on vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, and accident history, which was, there's only been one accident in the last five years, he felt that the way things are right now, being a stop sign on the Rochester Street side was adequate. In fact, according to the manual, you don't even need a stop sign there because it's a T-intersection.
Yeah, but the-
But there is one, and crosswalk markings on the road besides.
Their tenant parking lot lies right across there, and, you know, we are talking senior citizens.
I realize that. The only thing is, you know, like you said in the report, there's only been one accident in the last five years. Sure, you know, one could happen tomorrow, but you could say that about any intersection.
How many cars did he say pass through there on a daily basis?
About twenty, I thought it was 2,400.
About 2,400. If you're not a senior citizen, it's hard to cross the street if there's 2,400 cars going by in a day.
It's like an all-way stop, but if that is not cheaper way to go.
That's what we asked for if they said no.
Well, we could still do that by resolution. We could still put a stop light there. If that, I mean, if that's what you feel more comfortable with.
I think though, an all-way stop at rush hour is going to bottle up traffic there, like Thursday and Fridays at Fulton Savings and all. I don't think an all-way stop is the way you want to go, not without studying it further. An all-way stop is going to stop traffic everywhere, one's got to wait, and I don't-
I'll tell you, this same resolution's been brought to this table over past years. These people have been down there for I don't know how many years now asking for a traffic conveyance on that corner because of the situation that exists. Your gentleman can do-
Oh, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed. I'm opposed to an all-way stop though.
I think Jim feels more comfortable with a stop light.
Or the flashing light, that's fine, but I don't think four-way stop is the way to go. That's the only thing I was saying, I wasn't opposed.
Not a four-way stop, it's blinking caution.
Yeah, that's fine. I got no problem with it.
Ryan.
This is all, the parking lot's across the street from Tofat, right?
This is part of it, yeah.
Because it's a good possibility, very good possibility that the parking lot will become on the same side of the street as Tofat, so it's not hit across that street.
We don't know that.
I'm on the board of directors of Tofat Towers, and I do know some things, and I don't think you would have to worry about a parking lot across the street next year.
Now, at that time, I suppose we could take the light down.
Why waste the money now?
It's going to cost over $5,000 to put the poles in and the lights up.
Why waste the money now if the light becomes non-existent in the next 12 months?
We might save a life, period.
History shows there's never been any life.
Rod, you know, you can sit there and say that, but you know, that's how the light at Philip and 1st Street got put there, you know, because of one accident.
David, I have a question.
Yeah, Jim.
What would you prefer there? I mean-
My first recommendation or question to the police department was about a four-way stop. Their reply to that, that that was one of the most unsafe conditions that you could put in any four-way intersection, which-
I agree.
-I agree. I don't think a stop light per se is the right way to go because I agree with what Jimmy said, the fact that it will bottle up traffic at rush hour down there, and we have enough problems with traffic downtown, as everyone knows. So the halfway in between would be to try to slow traffic on way and keeping the stop in the other. And that's a blinking caution with a stop.
Any other questions?
Well, let me start around this. And the situations you've got can be very simply solved with just some paint. There is a state that has a city ordinance where they have a very wide yellow-stripped crosswalk, and a citizen crossing the street has the right way. And if a motor vehicle happens to go by when a person's one foot is in the crosswalk, they'll be fined $100. So there is an alternate way of doing things, and this goes for the whole city. If you have designated crosswalks and pedestrians are in the crosswalk at the time, and if a motor vehicle goes through the crosswalk, that person can be fined $100.
Can I ask you a question? Are you aware of the fact that there is a crosswalk that exists on the road there now?
And if it's-
Do you also know that by traffic vehicular law that the pedestrian has a right of way, even though we don't practice it much anymore?
Should-
And with that crosswalk being there and the fact that that law exists, would you like to put your life on the line on that crosswalk?
Hardly.
This is for Nigga Mohawk to buy the car and put it on- The parking lot is still to be utilized, so.
Just by having a yellow flashing light, it doesn't mean they have to stop, it's just a warning, and they could ignore that as easily as they could ignore the stripes on the road. Yes. And they spent probably a week or better on this. They had at least one person, I think on a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, just sitting there counting the number of people, counting the number of cars, looking up the accident history.
Does anybody consider signs saying pedestrians coming from crossing ahead? Was that ever discussed?
No, I don't think so. Did you ever-
Table up, man. I was just wondering, if you're so concerned with the senior citizens crossing the street there, why they just placed seven new parking spots on the west side of that street across from Fulton Savings Bank? Doesn't that interfere with the line of view of cars and/or pedestrians? And now we want to put a light up? Why do we just put all those new parking spots there for view to be obstructed?
I don't think the view's obstructed because those parking spaces are in front of the sub shop where the sub shop was. The senior citizens don't have to walk down there to get to their cars. I don't understand.
Side street parking all the way up through there, where the senior citizens cross the road, all the way up on the west side of that street. And if you're a senior citizen, you happen to walk through a car, and a car coming southbound wouldn't be able to see you behind that car, maybe you might step out in front of it. Maybe you could look at the parking situation there, too.
Any other comment? Roll call vote.
First Ward?
Yes.
Second Ward?
Yes.
Third Ward?
Yes.
Fourth Ward?
No.
Fifth Ward?
Yes.
Sixth Ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried, your honor.
Number 10.
I don't have 10.
4-H clover sign.
Okay. Resolved that the Oswego County Cooperative Extension 4-H be authorized to install a 12-inch metal 4-H clover sign near the existing city sign entering the city of Fulton on Route 3 on the west side of Fulton, subject to the approval of Steve Lund, the building inspector.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. Before we go into the discussion items, I, do I understand that somebody wants to take a picture of Nunzio Fashara and me? Not that I think that's any big deal, but that's what the clerk was telling me. Is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Why don't we do that so we don't keep him waiting? I'm sure he'd like to get away as soon as he can. Can we do that now? All right. Nunzio, you want to come up? Nunzio?
You do it out there so he's more happy.
Thanks, George. Thanks a lot. Good luck.
For discussion, number item one is withdrawn, we add it on the next meeting. Item two. Yeah. John, you want to explain this to us?
Your honor, I'd like to add a maintenance position to the Fulton Housing Authority. As you can see, according to my letter that I have given you and the council to be put on file, that it could save the Fulton Housing Authority approximately $10,000 a year in overtime by adding this position. With this position, we would like to add Melvin Cooper, who is already an established maintenance person on-site. He does live in the Pathfinder Court project. Thus, by having given him a base rent, we do not have to have a surcharge added on to his rent, and therefore, we don't have to give him the overtime that we find necessary to give the other man. It's gone through our board of directors already, it just needs council approval. It's pretty much a formality whenever we make any type of staff change down at the Fulton Housing Authority. As you can see by the letter, we're four apartments shy of having the extra fifth man, but as we're going to show the state of New York with that letter, that by adding this fifth man, we'll be able to save money for the Fulton Housing Authority. And in addition, possibly the city of Fulton should subsidy have to come from the city of Fulton in the near future.
Well, one thing I was curious about is, how long has this situation existed?
It's existed throughout the years, your honor, and I've finally taken a step to correct it now by adding this extra man.
So this has been the amount of overtime approximately every year?
Yes, we have.
For that reason?
Yes. Between, they do everything from plumbing, electrical, right on up to snow plowing in the wintertime. And by adding this extra man, we'll be able to utilize a person who would not qual, originally qualify for the benefit of overtime in exchange for his deduction in rent.
Once he serves a probationary period, does that become permanent then?
He has been with us approximately half a year now on a full-time payroll. This is a formality in order to add him on. We could give him a probationary period if that's what the council feels is necessary.
Oh, I don't know. I just, I'm curious as to when it becomes permanent.
Yeah, well, I would like to make it a- Yeah, well, I would like to make it effective as soon as New York State, uh, feels it to be, uh, sufficient.
And once it's permanent, in other words, nothing we can do about it, right?
Once it's permanent, it's a fixed position down there.
Can your position be abolished?
Yes.
At any time?
At any time. It's a non-competitive position and be the same as our other four maintenance men that are down there. Uh, back in February, uh, we eliminated our maintenance supervisor position, and by doing so, we put him back out working full-time with the men rather than acting as a supervisor. I took over the supervisor position, and I foresee everything that goes on in the maintenance department now. Uh, we had an extra man who was just a supervisor. We put him out in the field to give our guys, you know, a little break.
Well, before that, how many did you have on maintenance?
We still have, we have four right now with Mel Cooper.
I mean, before you put the supervisor on, how many did you have on maintenance?
Just four. Or we had three.
So, you had three on maintenance. How long ago?
Up until January of this year, we had three and a supervisor. Now, we took the supervisor title away and went with the four-man position.
So, now you want five instead of, you had three men doing the work before, and now you want five?
Well, it's because, no, we had four men.
Well, you said supervisor was only a sup, was supervisor.
Supervisor, yeah, that's about what all he did was...
So, you had three men that were actually doing the maintenance work?
Yeah.
Now, you want five?
Yes.
John, that doesn't make sense.
The fifth man that's down there now is a non-overtime personnel, and we'd like to keep him on.
How much overtime did you have when you had three men doing the maintenance work?
Approximately $26,000, as you can see according to the letter, a little over 30 if, after all the benefits are included.
But now you want five to do the work of three.
Our men are overburdened. There's 246 apartments down there.
I'm sorry. I, I don't reconcile those figures. If you had three men doing maintenance work...
We had three men and a supervisor.
With the same amount of overtime that you have down here.
Three men and a supervisor.
But the supervisor wasn't doing maintenance work.
Well, he, he fills in the positions from time to time. When guys are on vacation, he does go out and do maintenance orders, yes.
Excuse me, Your Honor.
That's part of his job qualification.
I think we have Patrick going to say something.
Brian?
I've been on that for three years. How is your vacancy rate now, with these figures you're giving the mayor, compared to vacancy rates in the past with overtime? You've got to compare. A lot of times, when I was on that board, that place was full. It was never, it wasn't empty, and so they periodically would get to an apartment when someone moved out, but they never would have a lot of apartments. The three men were always planning to take care of the plowing or the lawn mowing and the little bit of repair maintenance that they had. If you have a lot of vacancies and a lot of turnovers, then you're going to create a lot more work.
And that's one of the reasons that our personnel department is overburdened right now because we did have a lot of vacancies in the recent months. Um, we had a 90% occupancy rate, which effective October 1st will be about 97%. And thus, to stay on top of these overturns, that we need an extra man down there. Uh, it's going to save...
What, is your overturn rate any more now than it was before?
No, it runs, before it used to run about 95%, but our waiting list dwindled in the last three, four months, thus, when the people moved out of their apartments. We had a few changes down there. When I came on board, as you know, any management position that you come into is going to face some harsh realities. Uh, I had to deal with those realities, and unfortunately, it led to, uh, for example, enriched housing program left because the state, uh, refused to grant the funds to the counties for enriched housing continuance. Thus, we lost, you know, about 10 people in our senior building all in May. I mean, that put us apartments behind. We had people who moved out, uh, before April 1st because of a continued occupancy report that we have to fulfill every year, and people who were considered in a higher bracket didn't want to pay the rent, they moved out. You have that every year, and, uh, it's just getting to a point where our men are answering those buildings are starting to deteriorate more and more as the year goes on and years go on, and we need an extra person down there to take care of it.
These men don't do actual, uh, constructional repair work, though.
They do any electrical, as far as changing switches and plumbing, main lines. They do yard work, lawn work, some roof repairs, window painting, any exterior work, garbage houses, office work, any workwear that comes in. The, and snow plowing on top of that, walks. In the summertime, they do trimming, they do tree work. They do everything that you would have a DPW, a water department, and your janitorial staff do.
Can I ask you a question? The letter that you gave us here, you're showing a total of $30,496 in overtime for the year 91-92.
That's correct.
You're basing the new position at 19,444, plus $1,000 for overtime was 20,444, giving us supposedly a savings of $10,052 for the year. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Now, this is going to assume then that the other gentleman received no overtime, correct?
That's correct. The, the other gentleman will not...
So, you're giving the new position $1,000 overtime?
No, the other, the new position is taking into consideration $1,000 in overtime for the maintenance people who do not live on the project grounds.
Lost me somewhere.
You're going to, you're going to run into overtime, no matter how many people you have.
Then, then you're saying if we're going to lose...
But that overtime is going to be cut down drastically because you have one man on call that lives there and one man that lives there.
That's what I'm asking you because you're giving us the numbers here that we're going to have a zero overtime budget, so we're going to have with the numbers you got here.
Well, no, our, our overtime budget will be about $1,000 rather than $26,000.
Check what your overtime's going to be because most of us in the winter, if they've got to plow this week on, they're going to get paid the overtime, no matter if you've got five guys.
Well, you want to, you want to know what I did last year? I plowed the streets myself to save overtime. I don't know if George or anybody else does that, but I do. I get out there and I plow the streets myself. Do you think I live coming in on Saturday and Sunday morning doing those streets? That's why I need the extra position down there.
Did the Housing Authority Board approve this, sir?
The Housing Authority Board did approve it. They thought it was an excellent idea.
Well, can I make a suggestion, then? We vote on it and take a roll call vote?
Fine. Make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
What's the motion?
Got to read the resolution.
The Fulton Housing Authority be authorized to establish one full-time position in the maintenance department, total cost of $20,444.
Before you make a, a vote on this, I, I want the council to be sure they understand that any deficit in the Fulton Housing Authority budget is made up by the city of Fulton. I've had a complaint from the chairman of the board, Ron Woodward, that the state hasn't responded, and they haven't come up with the monies they were supposed to give. Is that right, John?
Thus, all the more reason to enact this by dissolving our overtime budget.
The state's still giving you the subsidy, right?
Yeah, there, there's still on it, and I've written a letter on it, and I haven't got a response to it. And, uh, you know, we're talking about creating another position, and in face of that, I think council should be aware of these facts.
You're talking about creating a position that would save $10,000.
John, I still don't understand how you can go from three men with the same overtime, now you're talking about putting on five men to save that overtime.
We already have a four-man staff down there, George.
You said the four men before you put the supervi...
The position in January wasn't created, it was already there.
I understand that. You said that the fourth man was previously a supervisor who did not do maintenance, and at that time, you had three men doing maintenance. Is that right?
Well, he, he does maintenance, but he doesn't, he didn't do...
Previously, he didn't do maintenance.
He didn't do it on a full-time basis, no, but he, he supervises these gentlemen.
All right. Roll call. Wait a minute, we got a second?
Quick.
I, I really think this needs more investigation, but that's up to the council.
John, does he'd like to, uh, see a little bit more?
It's one of the things that, uh, I'll just mention it to John Lincoln, is that before I vote for this, I'd like to look at the numbers and make sure that they look right.
I, I think so.
This is the first time we've seen this. You know, you can't be expected to...
Well, I think somebody, I think somebody from the council should meet with the board, and, and you're right, examine these figures.
We got a committee that, that serves for...
We can have the budget committee look at this.
I think that's a good idea.
I would also like to suggest that the budget committee look at our whole entire budget when we submit it to the state of New York, too.
That's a...
And that hasn't been done in who knows how many years.
Good idea, too. Okay?
You know, I don't know that we're against or for this, John, but...
Right.
You know, we just got a lot of numbers here that are getting thrown at us, and...
No, I understand, I understand that, uh, this is basically just a formality. Our board, uh, passed this unanimously. They, they...
We'll table it till the next meeting.
And it may very well be a good thing, but I don't even know how much a person down there makes.
Yeah. The average person down there makes right now about $20,000 for a maintenance position. Thus, when we're bringing this new man in at 13, it's substantially less.
Well, why don't we table it till the next meeting, and, uh, meanwhile, the, uh, budget committee can meet with the board.
Motion to table?
First, we need a, a second on the main motion, then a motion to table.
Not to table. Can table at any time.
Motion to table?
I'll make it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried.
Thank you.
Item three has been held to the next meeting. And item four?
I think we discussed this in the back room, and what, uh, we all came up with is that we're going to keep the trees that we have on there right now, and that any add-ons that we get after today's date will go on next year's tree list. That's the way I understand it.
Motion?
I'll make it after John reads the rest of the question.
Well, what are we doing?
We're going to, we're going to abide by the add-ons that we have right now.
There was no more add-ons.
After, after today, okay, any add-ons that would come in tomorrow till the end of the year will go on next year's tree list.
So, actually, the motion is going to be that the add-ons in the list submitted dated September 1st, 1992 will be approved. Anything further add-ons would be had to take care of next year.
Yep. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carried. September 1st, 1992. Any, uh, one from the audience that has anything they would like to bring before the council? Ross?
I know some of the, uh, general children of America, Sunday, and the city of Fulton is rated second in the crime rate in central New York. I think you ought to take good look at them in figures. It's very alarming, very, very alarming. Ithaca is first, Fulton, New York is second. Am I right, chief?
Anyone, anyone else?
I have a question.
Sure.
For the police chief. Um, I have had a few calls this week about people complaining about gangs hanging out in the Woolworth's parking lot across from their homes, and, and the other night, we had to have all our police cars there, and five sheriff cars came in, and, and they thought it was, uh, some kind of racial problem going on here in the city, and I think also in, uh, Jim Rice's ward.
Yeah, a week or so ago.
And she's just concerned, I've had a few calls, uh, about what, what's happening or what's going on, and, and how is the police department handling it? And she was more concerned about our policemen, really.
Should be concerned about policemen. There's a lot of weapons being brought in out there, and, uh, numerous arrests made. Last night, uh, there was more arrests made. There's been two, I think, the night before that, two the night before that. The last three nights, we've had to get assistance from the state police and sheriff's department due to the number of people that are out and around with weapons. Yes, there's a problem.
Is there any way we can keep them from gathering in the parking lot there, in Woolworth's parking lot?
If they don't gather there, they're going to gather someplace else, and if they're not doing something illegal, not an awful lot of activity to do something, they, after keeping the noise down, they're not being disorderly.
Is there, uh, is there a law about loitering? Or just being a nuisance, like just hanging out on the street for hours and hours in the same place?
Only if, only if you're doing an illegal act. Like you're lording to sell drugs, et cetera, but you have to be able to prove that. Just to be out there, no.
Chief, if I could ask you a question. What is the average age of the people that are being, uh, arrested? Any idea?
Uh, some, uh, some of the problems we've had have been as, uh, young as 15 and up into, uh, 18, early 20s.
So, you're saying that the average is somewhere around the age of 17? Would you contribute this to the fact that maybe there's no place for these people to congregate in the city? As far as the rec center or something along those lines?
This, I, I don't know if it's going to help this or not. We have some people here that have apparently a basic dislike for one another.
Hmm. I could tell you more about it later.
I think those rec centers, you know, they've tried those over at the CYO. I, I remember when I was growing up, you know, I used to go over there and play basketball and shoot archery, the whole nine yards. I don't know if that, if, are there not enough of those, or people just aren't interested in doing those types of things anymore.
I'm just, I'm just concerned if, if something like that...
So am I.
...might deter some of this, it would be something to look into. I mean, we don't have a theater, we don't have a rec center, we don't have much of anything.
I have, I was meeting with a couple members of the clergy for Doro noon to see if, uh, they could come up with some suggestions. They contacted me and asked me to meet with them to see if they could come up with some suggestions to assist in this.
We're also trying to arrange a meeting with the interested parties. I've been in contact with several citizens that have been involved in this today and with the chief, and we're trying to arrange a meeting with the council and see if, uh, some of the tension can be alleviated. And, uh, the city attorney is going to check out the state statute also on loitering, see if there's anything there that can be helpful.
Most of these people are, you know, 17, 18 years old, or are they older, or...
Well, not necessarily.
He said 18.
No, we don't have a curfew. Curfews are very difficult to enforce, and sometimes they exacerbate more than they help. That's always a possibility, I suppose.
Are the people that are being arrested, are they legal residents of the city of Fulton, or are they coming in from other areas?
Well, you, you can't limit it to residents of the city.
Yeah. I find it strange, though, when people call you up and, and ask an alderman, what could you do about the gangs on the streets and all that? It's not something really that, that we're qualified to do, you know, that, you know, and I told them that I'm sure you're doing the best you can.
Well, the police are definitely looking into it. They, they know that there's a problem, and they're, they're looking into it.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that isn't what causes crime, Ross.
And I, I don't think that's a fair, uh, reflection upon somebody who's on welfare. Jean?
What kind of weapons are these people carrying? I mean, because I know there's a lot of people who walk that area, uh, which are...
Who carry everything up to guns, machetes, knives. Yeah, you have a right to be concerned. I'm sorry to say. Yes.
I want to buy their, their stuff cards in their parking lot with people sitting in them. You almost think that the movie was still open instead of Empire Vision there. And I've wondered, what are all these people doing sitting in these cars?
Mary, there's no question about that, and as I say, city attorney checking on the, uh, statute, state statute on loitering, and, uh, we'll see if that's going to be of any help. If not, why perhaps we can enact something that will. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, John? John, uh, could you read the cap ordinance to clear up a lot of controversies in Manhattan Public?
Uh, I haven't got a cap or a copy of it with me, but I, I'll give you one, and then, you know, we'll have Joe read it at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed and by no. Carried. Opposed and by no. Carried.